It's now past seven o'clock and I will call this the House of Lords for the city event Tuesday for March 3rd at seven o'clock. If you would please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Cheryl Fisher, the mayor. To my left are the council members Vanderlinde, Hunt, Donahue, and Christians, and our city engineer, Mark Erickson. To my right is the city staff, our city administrator, Mike Funk, our director of finance, Brian Grimm, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, our assistant administrator, Mike Roy, and our director of public safety, Paul Falls. And of course, our city court is taking minutes. I thought the first thing that I need to do, and I need probably a motion for this, is to add to our agenda under six B, probably. We want to carry over something from the work session, the agenda topics, discuss those and see what we can do under six B, if that's okay.
I'll make a motion to add the special meeting topics to six B.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded to add that then under six B. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Next I have is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, as written.
Can I second it? Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, other...
Well, can I... Should I pull something from the consent agenda now or wait?
Wait till we get to the consent agenda, I think. Because they're legitimately on the agenda, it's just that if you don't know.
Done, right.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as we've written it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Next item, persons to be heard. Tom Notch of Bornview Drive. Mr. Notch.
I was here, gosh, probably about six weeks ago, and I had a few questions at that time for Mark with WSB. It was a Tuesday meeting and he wasn't able to be here at the time. But the questions I had, basically they were relating to this well two A that was put online in 2011. And I had questions on that. And since then, I was able to get ahold of Mark after one of the special water meetings I went to. And I just had a few concerns with that. And I had a question with... Whereas, this is a well that's got radium levels that are high, where it has to be blended or can't be used without blending the water. And basically, what I found out, I thought you should all be aware of, is normally the radium would have been found out when they do the test well. In this case, they were looking at two potential well locations for the final well, and ended up putting this test well, is my understanding, at a point, kind of midpoint between them. And the test well cost, to my understanding, no more than around thirty grand. They were trying to minimize that cost, at least that was the number I was given. And the main well that was put in was like a $500,000 price, is what I was told. And to me, that didn't seem like that was... We were being very good stewards of the people's resources here. It seems to me that we should have done two test wells and maybe the other location would have been better and we wouldn't be having an issue with this. I also was questioning, and I understand now that that well wasn't being used or is being... You're blending it. And my question to the council is, is that truthful from the very time that they drilled it? When did they find out that the radium levels were high and they didn't put it online? And then the other thing I wanted just to mention, I've been going to these water meetings, as you know, and I'm interested in it. I've been a professional engineer since eighty-one, had my own company since... For thirty years over now. And I gotta say, I went to the one last Friday that Bolton and Mink put on, and just a wonderful group of very professional people that put that on. And the one thing that I took away from it was, the plan that we were looking at from WSB was only going out two and a half years to a maximum maybe of five years before the capacity would have been maxed out. Yet, the study that you had Ellers do, and I still don't know what that amount was paid to Ellers, that wasn't included in the breakdown funds that I saw for the pilot study. But the amount that they came up with, one hundred and sixty-nine per resident that hooks up to it, is meaningless because in five years or two and a half years, you're gonna have to go through the whole thing, add on your plants. And I think it was irresponsible to present something like that.
Excuse me, Mr. Notch, we're not gonna take sides and say things like that. I think this is a very specific topic, and you've all brought it up, and we're all gonna study it, and we're all gonna take it. Bolton and Mink are here, WSB is here, and then I thought we were having another session on the seventeenth. Perhaps I'm wrong about that, maybe tonight is the night, I don't know. I don't think it's a persons-to-be-heard issue, I think it's actually an issue to be done under the water treatment.
Well, I just thought you should know what I found out on the well two A.
And I do appreciate what you said. I appreciate what you said.
Okay, well, you guys, God bless you for all the time you're putting in.
Yeah, thank you.
And I feel bad that you have to put all this time in. In some respects, I'm not sure that we're served as well as we could be by maybe our consultants and our manager possibly too. Thank you.
Okay. Anything positive? Mr. Donahue.
Don Donahue, six one one five Sunnyfield Road. Been there since nineteen sixty-four. Our road is impassable in the spring. We have breakup because we can't get fire protection. We lost one of our city trucks over a bank that stormed Thursday. Luckily, Steve wasn't hurt. Back in the sixties, we did lose Tony Kekler. He got killed on that same corner by a truck that rolled on him. In seventy-five, we had a fellow go straight off the end of that T and broke his neck. There's no guardrails there. This is the third road committee I've been on to try and get our roads passable and safe. Our engineering company has done very little to take care of our roads. We need a guardrail there, it has to be redone. I brought in two road specialists from different cities that do roads all over the state, and refuse to be listened to because they're not engineers. They only build roads for the last three or four decades, build them. I talked to the people that live on that corner about the salt cleanup. Gary Peters said today they're gonna take care of it tomorrow. That salt melt is gonna run out in the hay field and ruin everything. And they're wondering about their fence being replaced with insurance, if the truck is gonna be fixed by insurance. And that would be the extent of the road business. I hope I have...
I appreciate that, and I hope you bring that to the road committee so they can straighten it out. That is their purpose, to give us recommendations and so on and so forth.
Pardon?
I hope you will bring that to the road committee, since you are part of the road committee, so that they will also give that to us as a recommendation.
Right. I was privileged to attend the meeting with Bolton and Mink last week. Very impressed with the professionalism. It's not seen every day. Talking to some of the cities and listening to Mr. Johnson, who gave his presentation earlier about Marshall, Minnesota, losing their water table by forty feet, that's quite impressive. Being in the plumbing business for thirty-some, forty-some years, we know the water table's dropping, you're gonna get to the bottom of your water tables, and you're gonna have bad water. Like Tom had mentioned about that well on Game Farm, would a filter system clean up the contaminants in that well, or do we need an RO system to clean up the contaminants in that well?
Mr. Donahue, I have to stop you there about the water thing, because I did the same thing to Mr. Notch, and I think that's only fair. It's an item on our agenda tonight yet, and we have two different engineering firms, they can go back and forth and talk about it. None of us are really watering well people, I mean, we know some things but not everything.
Okay, can we go talk about stormwater that Mr. Johnson was talking about? We are told that we get a bill every month for our stormwater study. I've got a ditch in front of my house, there's culverts and everything else. How long do we... What was the cost of that study? Was it done by WSB, or who was it done by? And what was the cost of that study? And how long do we have to pay for it?
We don't have those answers here, but I will direct staff to figure that out.
Okay, and they'll get back to me?
They'll get back to you or me, or I'll get back to you, so...
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue, I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, can we seek clarification again? As with persons to be heard, this is an opportunity for residents to address the council. If you'd like any feedback from staff, we certainly can provide some feedback or provide any answers to questions that have been raised, but that's at your purview. I just want clarification on what Mr. Donahue is requesting, I'm not...
I don't... What's the stormwater study?
I'm not sure what the request is.
Yeah, I don't know what that is either, so honestly, that's why I said they could take a look at it, and I would too, but I don't know what that is, so... Mr. Donahue, do you know when that study was requested and when it's due? I think we're a little at a loss here about the stormwater study.
On the stormwater study?
Yeah.
We get a bill for it every month.
Well, it's not for the study, that's for stormwater. That's what you pay for stormwater removal.
I was told by you years ago it was a study that we're paying for.
Well, we maybe started with the study, but it certainly didn't end there, and that's not what you're paying for.
Has that been paid for?
I'm sure it has, it's old. It's like ten years old, maybe more.
Okay. What are we paying for then?
You're paying for stormwater. We have to do something with our stormwater on your property.
I've got a ditch in front of my house. Water goes downhill, I learned that way back in plumbing school.
Okay.
What am I paying for?
Okay. Would you like to jump in here somewhere, because I have not made myself clear apparently?
Maybe just to give you an overview, we do... If you're talking about the... What used to be called the stormwater fee on your utility bill, it's called something different now. It's called the storm... It's called the surface water management fee. That was implemented in two thousand and four, I believe, so it's been... It's been quite some time, prior to a lot of us sitting up here, so that's when it was implemented.
Am I obligated to pay for that if I don't use it?
Everyone uses it, it's community thing, so...
By city ordinance, all residents are paying for that fee. That goes into a fund. The city council reviews the stormwater utility fund every year during the budget process. They review the fees and approve the fee structure, so... That answers your question, Madam Mayor and Council, if you're looking for more information to pass along to Mr. Donahue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've been talking to a lot of different cities about the articles in the paper on RO out of Clara City, Olivia.
Mr. Donahue, I'm going to ask you again to take a look at that. It's under item six B now, I think it is, or A, I'm not sure, but under item six.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. The next item, our special presentations, of which we have none this evening, so we'll have the consent agenda. You wanted to pull one though, Ann.
Yeah, I'd like to pull the special meeting minutes from February eighteenth to have some addition and corrections.
I'd like to pull item I.
Oh, for Gillespie, okay. All right. The rest of the consent agenda... Well, the consent agenda consists of approving minutes of February eighteenth, regular and special, a resolution approving a reimbursement agreement between Sourceland Capital LLC and the city of Minutrista to extend municipal water to the former Red Oak Golf Course, D, which is the resolution approving a simple subdivision for Wayne Rice and Upland Farm Homeowners Association to allow a lot line adjustment between the properties, ordinance number one... Or, excuse me, four one seven, amending section one zero zero five point oh three, this is the noise regulations to define holidays, F, which is a resolution to close Highland Road Capital Fund... Project Fund, excuse me, activity to Highland Road Debt Fund, and G, which is a resolution approving a site setback variance, the application from Joshua and Jennifer Riff for variance from seventy-five feet to forty-eight point seven feet to construct a screen porch on the property located at forty-seven seventy-nine Crane Island in the R1 zoning. H is the resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for dust abatement, and I is to approve scope of work and cost for pre-demolition hazardous materials, building survey for the Gillespie Center... Or, excuse me, the Gillespie property at fourteen twenty Westwood Drive. Now, I would take a motion approving those, but take out item A?
And B.
And... And B?
Yeah, I need to add.
Oh, you needed both of them?
I want to add.
And then Mark had I, right?
Yep.
So, A, B, and I, so if you can have a... Okay, with the rest of the consent agenda, that'd be great.
So moved.
Seconded.
To approve the consent agenda with the exception of A, B, and I. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, opposed I should say, same sign, five zero. Now, we'll start with the minutes. A, Ann, that was you.
Under the special meeting minutes, I wanted to add, under the discussion, special... On page two, under discussion included, there was a discussion on costs spent on the pilot project to date, including a breakdown of pilot study fees that was requested by Mayor Fisher and seconded by... Or, not seconded, but also agreed to by Mr. Christians. So I wanted to add that one.
Well, I think we just wanted to know what they were, I don't think...
Yeah, but it wasn't included in the minutes that there was a request for it.
All right. Go ahead, item B.
So that was... Yeah, that was item B. And then in the regular meeting minutes, I would recommend...
If I could, you just maybe want to take one action at a time, so...
Okay, so the discussion.
So, correct. And so, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hunt, if you... What you just specified, just by mo... If you want by motion, make that motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, she wanted to include what we... The cost that we'd asked for, Bob and I, that were not... It wasn't included that we had asked for those costs on that pilot study.
Correct.
In the special meeting minutes. It's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Okay, so item B?
And then item B, would I...
I'll second.
Okay. I thought you did. I'm sorry. Okay, well, I just assumed.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, item B.
Moving to item B, I'd like to make a motion to change the recorded motion in the regular meeting minutes, page one, section three B, paragraph two, two, motion by Hunt, seconded by Christians, to accept the Bolton and Mink proposal for value engineering study at the rate of $10,000 in addition to airfare hotel for Gordon Culp, Bolton and Mink consultant, to be conducted Wednesday, February nineteenth, Thursday, February twentieth, and Friday, February twenty-first in Chaska, Minnesota, with the attendance and assistance of WSB, Minutrista city staff, and the city council. Bolton and Mink will provide specific times and directions to city staff, WSB, and the city council. Motion carried five oh.
In that same motion, should there have been... Did the $10,000 cover the report that we got to start with? You handed out of...
Yes, yes, yes.
Plus all their time and travel and everything they did for that seminar?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else? No? It's been moved and seconded, it'd be changed... Do you have that at all?
Yes.
You have that, okay.
We do have our recording secretary, we have it.
Our city clerk is right knowing. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Now, item I, Mark, that was you.
Can you explain this? You did put this together, did you, Mark?
David Abel. The audience had prepared the agenda item there.
If I can, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Vanderlinde, Mr. Abel is our staff liaison on those projects, and Mr. Abel is here to field questions.
Let me find it here. Okay, here it is. Now, we've got in here that we're gonna do a... An asbestos testing, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and you are required to do that by law. Also, there's a lead paint inspection or testing. And I wasn't sure about that, because I do demolition, and I've never been required to do that, so I talked to my testing company today, and they said they... The state doesn't require it anymore. And then I talked to the landfill, which is Louisville landfill, which is a demolition landfill, and they said the MPC changed that law in July of thirteen, that it's not required, because they had a problem trying to figure out how to put a bubble around trucks, a backhoe, and a whole house. So it didn't work out real well. So I'm wondering why we're paying for lead paint testing.
Yeah, you're correct, Madam Mayor, Council. That is not a requirement listed for a demolition permit for when they demo a house, it's an asbestos report. That wasn't included as part of the scope, though, as part of the project that's included with... That we received for that sampling. So we know we would not have to do that in this example.
I guess the other thing, and this has nothing to do with you, there's a cost associated with doing this testing that was supplied by WSB, correct?
Correct.
And if my recollection, if I can find it here, was for the base for doing... Taking the samples was $2,400, right?
Correct.
And then the testing fees would be five hundred to fifteen hundred.
Correct. That would be to an outside independent lab to have that testing done.
Now, this is where I run into a problem, because I do this. And I talked to my tester today, which is Apex Environmental.
Okay.
The last one I did was about a year, a little over a year ago, and it was a house, and it was $490. So I called Jerry up today, and I said, this is the situation, we've got a house, detached garage, couple detached buildings. I said, what are we looking at? And I said, can I plug a number of a grand? He said, no, no. I said, you're way high. He says, you're talking six to seven hundred dollars. And that's for them to come in, they take the samples, basically all you do is you let them in the door, they take the samples, they take them out, they send them to their lab, they test it, they send you the results. This is where I got the problem. We're looking at a potential of $4,000 here. So I'm kind of going, how do you get from six to $700 to $4,000?
We can certainly go out for bid on this services. The only person... Other person that I talked to was our building official of the city of Victoria. One of their... One of their officials is certified to do this testing, so we asked if they would be interested in doing that for us. Given the amount of permit activity and workload that they have, they weren't interested in doing that. So the other... This is the only proposal that we received for that, so if it's certainly the direction of council, we can go out for quotes for companies to provide this service.
Well, I know Mr. Christians uses a couple of different companies in his business too that do this. And this bothers me. This really, really bothers me, that we're spending $4,000 because we didn't go get another quote from a company that I've worked with for years that'll do this for $700. Does this bother anybody in this room?
I'd like to add to that, Mark. Excuse me.
Oh, have at it.
Over the... Over the last twenty-four years, we fix, repaired, and built over 12,000 homes. Now granted, every one doesn't have asbestos to deal with, but we work with two companies. One is in Chaska, Nova. I don't know if you're familiar with them. The other one is Envirobait. We'll have three to six a year, homes that are probably... Well, let me put it this way. Of all the ones we've done over the last twenty-four years, I've never had one, ever, where I've paid more than $900. Ever. So I don't know, if you're looking at $4,000, I know some people would be real happy to do it for half that and make it killing. So it just seems to me like, in my opinion, based on the number that you are given, somebody's getting fat. I think it's... I agree with Mark. I couldn't believe it. When Mark told me what that happened, I was shocked, I couldn't believe it. I mean, we deal with this every day, and our business deals with this type of thing every day. Couldn't believe it.
I mean, would anybody from WSB like to comment on this?
Certainly... Oh.
Well, can I just ask a question? Because I don't... I didn't know about this before this time. It's my own fault, but I am curious about it. Are we comparing apples to apples? And, you know, my own preference is to praise in public and criticize in private, and so if we had an issue, we could have called David, we could have called Mike, we could have called the attorney, it's not what our actions are. We're lucky enough to have Mr. Christians there, who has some connections or whatever that we might be able to use, we don't know for sure. We don't know if it's a conflict of interest or not, if they make money out of it. I guess the attorney could address that. But could someone enlighten me? Because it seems to be a really big deal, and I don't seem to be getting the whole thing. I understand, I hear what you're saying.
I think the important thing is that... Is maybe just to, like we do with many things, is we verify pricing to see if it's adequate and fair and whatever. You know, like I said, I've dealt with this many times, and I don't ever... I don't ever recall paying more than $900 for asbestos mineral testing.
Then I think we should require them to...
And there are people that'll be more than happy to share with you the resources that we work with.
I agree with you. I think that's the whole point of this conversation.
I think instead of going on and on about that kind of thing, I think we should then ask staff or direct staff to go out for a quote for that and see what we get, because it's hard to tell without seeing the property again, without knowing just exactly what went on or who used what, if this is correct on either side. So I would just like to see that.
And that's fine. And I'm not gonna point fingers here, but the only thing is, getting one bid, I would not go get one bid. Most... I would not do one. Not do this. And that was one of our things in our strategic planning, was try and run our city more like a business. And that's getting multiple quotes on stuff that, you know, $4,000, $4,000.
I agree with you.
And like I say, it just so happens, when this came across my desk, I looked at it and I thought, you know, I do these things, and I'm thinking, is there something? Am I missing something here? It doesn't sound like I am.
Okay. Let me ask Josh then.
I certainly will evaluate our proposal as well. I know it is multiple structures, it's two houses, it's not the one, but I certainly will review what standards were proposed to be addressed and which ones may could... Or may be eliminated. You refer... Excuse me, you referenced the lead paint. I'm not familiar with that myself. We have an environmental scientist that deals with this day in and day out, that's his job, and certainly be happy to report back on that. I understand staff will also be looking at other proposals as well, and certainly can report back to council on that item.
Okay. Is council okay with that, or is that all right?
I think we have to.
Well, I agree, but I'm just trying to see if we got it to the right place.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like a motion then, please, directing staff. Do whatever you want.
So what do we need staff to direct them to get multiple bids? Do we need to wait for an explanation?
Well, I think you have to ask them... Well, explanation maybe one, and to go out for bids, you can't direct multiple bids because you don't know how many you will get.
Well, to put it out for bids.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna get multiple bids because there's multiple companies that do that, and...
Okay, we'll see. You should do that. But we should direct them so that it's very clear what council...
I would like to make a motion to direct the staff to explain or justify, I don't know what the terminology we should use here, the existing breakdown of how the numbers were arrived at, and also, like, where they came from. Who... You know, you mentioned something about Victoria, something about somebody out of Victoria.
Correct. We contract with the city of Victoria for our building official services.
Right.
So I initially consulted with them on vendors that do this type of work, and through that conversation, they mentioned that one of their building officials, Bill, is certified to do this sort of work. So Bill went out and took a look at the property. In addition to that, I was talking with our city engineering company, they all too, as well, provide this service. So we had their Ryan, their environmental scientist, that gave this proposal to us. He also took a look at the site and the three different buildings to give us the scope of services that was provided to us. So waiting for Tom, Victoria to get back to us, and WSB, through that process, given So waiting for Tom, uh, Victoria to get back to us and, and WSB, um, through that process, given the workload, Tom at Victoria said, we have too much work going on that we, we wouldn't be interested in doing that at this time. Um, and so we had this, uh, scope of services that was given to us and that's, uh, what we brought forth then to council this evening.
So this was provided to you then by WSB?
Correct.
And then, okay.
Could, could you, and I guess maybe this means council action, could you do the council a favor? I don't think it's appropriate for the council to have to direct staff to go get multiple bids, I think that's just something, would you please do that for us from now on?
Absolutely.
I'm not harping on you, but this, this is not my money. You know, it's not your money, it's not, you know, this is taxpayer money. We need to do our best job of getting bids out for this stuff, I don't care if it's a retaining wall or if it's testing for, we need to do this.
I think you're right, I think we sometimes are a little bit lax, but the fact of the matter is we, we are responsible for that.
Yeah.
So if he did that and we approved it, okay.
I'm concerned if this is happening on a small project, how often is this happening?
No, I know, this is a nice way to respond to this, but anyway, we'd like a motion, I think I, I disagree with the part where you don't have to direct staff because it's confusing to, there's been people saying, oh, let's get more bids, or no, let's not go there. Make it explicit, please, we didn't come up with what we really wanted on this particular item, so staff, would you please go out for quotes? And bring it back at the next meeting if that's possible, something like that.
Subnote.
Okay, woven in second to go out for more bids for the Gillespie demolition, uh, situation, um, is there any further discussion? Are you in all those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion will carry five zero. All right, um.
If I just could, Madam Mayor, I think certainly as staff, we, you know, you've seen our budgets every year, we've come in on the budget.
Right, I agree.
And so we, we are very diligent about making sure we spend our money wisely. And so, I, I think there's no intent on behalf of staff here that, that you just took the first proposal. So I think it's a matter, that's why it's on the consent agenda. You were able to pull it, you had some questions, if you're looking for, if you think there's better pricing available, we'll certainly spend more resources and, and time doing that. And we're happy to do that.
I knew you would be, thank you, very nice. All right, all those in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Go opposed, motion will carry five zero, I think I read it. All right, moving right along, no public hearing, so we'll move to the business items. Um, this is the water treatment, uh, value engineering study results on presentation of, with Bolton and Mink. Now, Mike, do you want to introduce them, please?
Um, yeah, this evening.
And we also have WSB in our audience too, I don't know if, that isn't on my agenda, but they are in the audience, so.
So just, uh, as a point of clarification, uh, when the, when the agenda was put together Friday morning, we, uh, we weren't sure if Bolton and Mink was going to be here because they had the presentation that afternoon on Friday, and so it was on the agenda. And, uh, I think on Friday, uh, we agreed that the March seventeenth was when they were coming, but.
Right, so I thought too.
There's some misunderstanding about when that might be, but they're here tonight, it is on the agenda and we're glad they're here. Uh, and I think I would let them introduce themselves.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, uh, worked with, uh, worked with some of the gentlemen that had Bolton and Mink in my previous, uh, previous work. And so I'm happy to see them here again. They do have a presentation here that they'll, they'll talk through and also I think this is also available for you in handout.
That would be great.
So that I'll let them introduce themselves, um, and their presentation.
Please, go ahead.
All right, well, good evening, uh, my name is Seth Peterson, I'm with Bolton and Mink. Um, Chris Watson is here also. Uh, both Chris and I were involved in the value engineering process and again, we thank you for that opportunity to, to go through the value engineering process, um, uh, for, uh, the city. And I know, I believe, uh, Bob Brown came and, uh, gave a, talked to you guys before about the value engineering process and the proposal. And so that process, that workshop was last week, last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And just to kind of, uh, refresh your, your mind, uh, the value engineering process just looks at all the data to date, um, all the information reports, et cetera. And we take that in an intense three-day process, go through it, evaluate it, come up, uh, with some recommendations and on items to consider as you continue to move forward with, uh, your, your water project.
Right.
And so that's really what that, that process is. We brought in a national consultant, you talked about that, Gordon Culp, Mr. Culp has fifty years of experience, he wrote the manuals on the value engineering process. And he came in and he was basically the moderator, he was the facilitator of the whole value engineering process. And then the value engineering team was comprised of individuals of, uh, Bob Brown and Herman Del Maraja and Greg Sint and Chris and myself and a couple others. And we kind of go through this very intense process. And so what I want to do today is just quickly run through that process for you. This is very similar to what we discussed on Friday afternoon, so some of you were there. Some of you were present on Wednesday morning for the very, uh, beginning part of that process. And so we formalized it a little bit more now, we were a little harried on Friday afternoon after three days of intense, uh, uh, process of going through this. Uh, it's a fun process, it's a very interesting process to go through. Um, and just kind of cap that and then Chris will come up and talk a little bit about some of the recommendations we have as we, as we went through it. So, um, there's really five key phases here of this value engineering, uh, portion. And it's the information phase, the speculative and creative phase, you have the evaluation phase, uh, the investigation phase and then recommendations. And, um, really, when you start off on the information phase, we made a data request to the city and, and obtained a lot of data. All this data was presented to us so we could gather that information. And we were reviewing this information before our meeting and then we used it oftentimes throughout the entire meeting process. Also, so this was Wednesday morning where, and we also had staff come in, we had WSB come in, we had some council come into the meeting and just give us some presentations on your system, your, the demographics of your, of, of Minatrista. And some background information for us, so we hear from you exactly what you're kind of looking for. Um, I think a key point of this, so that was kind of the morning, it took two, three hours, I suppose. And one of the key pieces of this is for you, uh, council or your city engineer or city staff to give us some constraints. To say, here, you have to stay within this bubble or this circle and the rest is, you can't go outside these boundaries. And so we, we had that. And so that helps us to define our area and, uh, so we can continue on with the process. So after we had that and it was about two, three hours, I think, on Wednesday morning, then we move on into the next phase, which is the speculative and creative phase. And that's when, um, you all departed and then we sat around a table and it's really, uh, this is really the brainstorming session right here. And we came up with really five key focus areas, I have another slide here and these focus areas are in red up there. And, uh, so we looked at these five areas, that's the first thing we did, we said, what are the five key points here? And we looked at them and we said, you know, where's the water source, system configuration, alternative treatment process, existing treatment plant design, and then backwash and RO reject wastewater alternatives. So those are really the five key areas we looked at. And then, um, what we did is we continued to go through those and list out just ideas. And at this point, it's very hard for a bunch of engineers as we just start throwing ideas out there, but you can't debate them. And that's what Gordon's very good at, um, of getting us just to throw ideas out there. And that's what we did, we went through this entire process, put all these together, we came up with fifty-two items to, uh, to evaluate. Um, as we move through this creative phase, then we move into the evaluation phase. So we listed all fifty-two of those items up, um, they're on sticky, you know, got notepads up and going around the room. Um, and then we go through and we evaluate each one of those fifty-two and give it a number rating, zero to ten. Ten is a high, something we want to continue to evaluate further. As we went through that, those fifty-two, we came up with thirty-three, we said, hey, these have enough merit, they ranked seven or higher. And we said, we're going to continue to evaluate these. So we went through these and we put a rating there, as you can see, there's the rating with the number. And then eventually, once we got done and rated them anything higher than seven, then we, uh, assigned it to a team member to, to study even further. So that takes us through the evaluation phase. And then from there, we went into the investigation phase. And that's any of those items that were ranked higher than seven. And so we each as team members got a handful of those and went through and spent the next, you know, twenty-four plus hours going through and, and evaluating them and, uh, running those recommendations out. And so as we went through those, these thirty-three here, so here's our recommendations, we had thirty-three of them, we went through, we put costs to them, we did various analysis with them. And we looked at them and we came up and you can see some of them have no next to them, meaning, no, we don't feel that warrants any further thing to look at. Um, there's ones that have guesses to them and those are ones, you know, we say, yeah, these are things we think you should consider, your consultants could consider as you continue to move forward in this process. So with this, Chris is going to get into a few of the, um, just the details of, of some of these recommendations.
Thanks, Seth, um, Mayor Council. Uh, from, from these recommendations, we wanted to highlight five of the bigger items for council this evening and, and just go through those briefly. Uh, those five items were, uh, recommendations, uh, to consider a central treatment facility. Uh, evaluate the design capacity and lifecycle costs of the proposed project. Uh, maximize use of existing water supply and then, uh, working down into reverse osmosis and, and some of the costs. Uh, the last one there about evaluate proposed rates, uh, that was something that was, you know, kind of out of our scope, but we did see that, uh, that the, uh, capital outlay maybe should be looked at for that, this project, uh, and pulled together as, as a more comprehensive, uh, look at some of the rates. But, but not something that we really evaluated, uh, during our study. Uh, the final thing that, that we heard from, uh, uh, the council and, and staff presentations on Wednesday was, you know, you didn't want to slow anything down. And so that, that was an important aspect that we wanted to highlight, that, you know, the recommendations we came up with, we didn't feel would, would slow the process down at all. And these were things that the, the city could look at. Uh, the first, the first major item that, that we recommended was the consideration of a central treatment facility. Uh, the proposed project right now has two treatment facilities, a five hundred gallon per minute and a thousand gallon per minute treatment facility. And, and we looked at the option of, of combining that into one central treatment facility. Uh, and, and looked at some, you know, rough numbers and, and what we could over a three-day process. Uh, that looked like it had the, uh, advantage of decreasing capital and O and M costs, ease of operation. Um, it's easily expandable, uh, from a sense that it's in one location and, and you can add on to that because that's where all your water sources are coming to. Uh, with a, with a central facility, we did consider that to be concrete filters rather than steel filters. And that's an important aspect of, of the design because of the longevity with that, um, process. It's also able to, to be a larger design, to, to be able to phase in and, and work towards some of the larger flows that the city of Minatrista might see over time. And it also would provide the same finished water quality to all. And, and I, I highlight that a little bit because that's been a big deal in other communities where they've had multiple water sources, uh, multiple systems. That, that providing the same water quality to all the residents is important because otherwise one area says, you know, well, we think this water's better or this water isn't as good or this type of thing. Well, I, I included a couple of pictures in our presentation just to highlight the, the difference between steel and concrete and why we're recommending, uh, the city and, and their consultant to consider these. There we go. Uh, top of a steel filter, you've got some hatches, uh, top of concrete filters, you've got some open basins. So there's just some ease of maintenance, uh, operation that comes with that. And, and then here, here's a picture of a steel filter down here. Um, and, and this is the, a similar area of a, of a concrete filter with some of the pipes going and the pipes here. And, and I show you that only because there's, there's, you know, kind of a, a difference in the look. And it helps give you an idea of why this one's a little more flexible and, and expandable. You can see that the steel filter, you kind of bring in one at a time and do that where concrete is, is able to be added on and there's just a little bit more robustness with that and how you build the concrete, uh, integrated into a building and, uh, some savings that can be seen, uh, from you doing that. Uh, the second recommendation that we had was, was to take a, take a look at the, uh, design capacity again, uh, of the facility. With the information that we were provided, it appeared that the, the treatment facility that were proposed, uh, would have a projected design life to about two thousand eighteen with some additional, uh, projects coming after that, ultimately having, uh, looked like four treatment facilities located, uh, throughout the city of Minatrista. We recommended that, that consideration be given for a longer design period, which is more common, uh, I guess in, in, uh, these type of treatment facilities so that consistent upgrades aren't needed. We certainly understand by, by doing upgrades over the years that growth happens during that time. And I think that was another important aspect of the central filter. Uh, option was that a central filter is, is more easily expandable and, and doing that rather than having small treatment plants located around. We think there's, uh, some significant savings, uh, that the city could realize through that. The, the final number in one of the reports gave it approximately a cost of eighteen million, uh, through two thousand thirty for all the, all the treatment facilities and that for the city of Minatrista. Uh, we did some rough analysis and, and thought that with a central facility and looking at this a little more long-term that there could potentially be three to five million dollars worth of savings that the city and the consultant could realize by, by considering some options regarding that. Uh, the third recommendation we had, uh, was to maximize the use of water supply. There was a number of new wells that were proposed to be drilled. Uh, we, we believe that there could be some savings in utilizing the existing wells, uh, the Mount Simons and, uh, not drilling quite as many new wells. Uh, you basically balance the, uh, cost of raw water main against the cost of wells and then getting them to a treat, a central treatment facility. And that's part of that recommendation, uh, that could, could save the city of Minatrista, uh, you know, some considerable costs over the next fifteen years. Uh, the final item that, that we, uh, looked at in depth was, was the idea of reverse osmosis. Um, one of the city's stated goals during their presentation to us was to provide the safest and highest quality water for our residents. And, and in consideration of that, uh, and I know some of the other things that the council had already looked at, we wanted to take a look at reverse osmosis in a little greater detail and see if there was some, uh, additional, uh, value-added ideas that we could come up with to, to help, uh, implement that if the city council, uh, thought that was desirable. Some of the items that we, that we think, uh, had some merit was the decrease of construction costs. This goes back to, uh, building a central facility, um, that would be easily either added, reverse osmosis too, uh, versus multiple plants. There's a certain, uh, base cost, uh, to adding in a second filtration system. And so if, if that was maximized at one facility versus two, three or four facilities, um, there's some general savings there. Uh, there's also some ideas with the RO, uh, design features, um, that we went through, uh, including how we blend the flows to provide the finished water quality that would be desirable, um, and the percent recovery, uh, that could be maximized as part of, uh, some innovative RO system designs. Uh, with that same idea, uh, something that city council had, had mentioned to us was the, the cost of the SAC fees, uh, during their presentation and how, how high they potentially could be. And so we looked at some options for decreasing those SAC fees, uh, including, uh, the RO design items that I mentioned already and also an equalization pond to try to equalize the flows during the high summer water use months, uh, through the fall or, or spring when water uses isn't quite so high to decrease those SAC fees. Uh, the idea with this is to, to provide additional, uh, savings to, to the users of the water system. And so with the, with the design considerations and some of the, some of the rough, uh, numbers that we came up with over our, our time last week, uh, it looked like approximate debt service and O and M increase that, to add the reverse osmosis, excuse me, uh, was approximately, you know, two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars per year, uh, per user. And, and keep in mind, these are, these are rough numbers. And, and then looking at the, the proposed and recommended savings from that, um, we, we also did some calculations to see what could be saved for the users, uh, with this water. And the thing to focus on here was the softness of the water. That wasn't a primary goal of the council, was to provide soft water, but it was to provide a safe and reliable, uh, and, and the highest quality. And so as part of that, um, there's some savings that can be gained with soft water. And, uh, we tried to highlight those numbers, uh, of what, what we recommended and what we, we thought could be realized, uh, for the savings. Uh, essentially, uh, the cost difference, uh, to add the RO versus what is saved, um, by a municipal user who's softening their water right now. Uh, the big cost there, uh, you know, is the, the hundred and fifty dollars cost and that's, that's roughly about three bags of salt a month that could be saved is what we calculated as part of that.
So, okay, so under that, so you're saying there's basically a fifteen dollar difference?
Oh, potentially.
Okay.
Uh, and like I said, we're, we're working in, you know, ranges of numbers and, and so it's.
So it's fifteen to fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in summary, you know, we went, we went through those items and these were the, these were the major things. I, I did mention that, you know, we didn't, we didn't evaluate the rates, we just, we'd have, make recommendations to, you know, take a new look at those. And, uh, consider, uh, those capital outlays to two thousand, uh, thirty. So with that, Seth and I are available for any questions that council might have.
I have one question on the, on the chart previous to this one, it had, uh, recharge water, thirty-five dollar recommended. You're talking about like currently the people that are buying bottled water?
Uh, no, the recharge, recharge water would be, uh, what's used to recharge your water softeners. So you, you have a cost, every night that your water softener recharges itself, there's some water, uh, that goes down the drain. Uh, we use the proposed rates.
Okay, got you.
And, and what water savings you have from the, the softer water source.
Well, a lot of the, you know, personally, I have an RO system and I really can't tell the difference between bottled water that I may buy at the grocery store versus what comes out of my RO system. Is there a difference?
Uh, it depends on what kind of bottled water that you're buying. The Aqua Fina, uh, which is manufactured by Pepsi, is typically pure reverse osmosis, uh, that's what they market and that's what they bottle. Uh, Coca-Cola, for example, Dasani, uh, they run it through a reverse osmosis process and then they have a blend of minerals that they add back in.
But in most of them that you buy, it's basically just a reverse osmosis, like what I would be getting, what I get is cheap water. I buy for the office, just regular cheap water.
It's, it's very similar to that.
It's just reverse osmosis and I can't tell the difference when I taste it, is there a difference in taste?
It, it's, it's really a personal preference as far as taste goes, I, I've heard a lot of different.
But I mean, I can't tell the difference.
I don't, I personally don't, but that's not really an engineering opinion, so.
But savings on bottled water isn't figured into this?
No.
So that would be additional savings.
Yeah.
So this, this water is, should be, be able to eliminate most water softeners?
Uh, it, it, it depends on the, the personal preference of the, um, individual. It'll, it'd be a hardness of about a hundred milligrams per liter, so it would still be moderately hard. And, and if you have a softener, you're usually used to zero hardness water. But the idea is, is that you've decreased the hardness by eighty. But the idea is that you've decreased the hardness by eighty percent, so eighty percent. So, you know, roughly, if you're using four bags of salt a month, you'd go down to using one bag a month. That's kind of the analysis and how the numbers just happen to work out.
So really, from the user standpoint, you would have the savings of the maintain, maintenance of the softener, the salt itself, and also having to buy bottled water?
Water, correct. And for a resident who isn't softening, then they would see significant savings in their water heaters and plumbing fixtures and that type of thing.
They would?
They would see a savings in their water heater, plumbing fixtures.
By having, by having a reverse osmosis?
Yeah.
Because it's better and not as corrosive.
Correct.
Well, as long as it's not copper, right? As long as it's not copper, right?
Okay. No.
Pure RO water is extremely aggressive and it's very difficult.
Uncooperated?
Yes, indeed.
That's correct, Mayor.
And I-
I'm sorry.
That wasn't my question anyway. My question is, you talked about the hardness of the water and I just was going to ask if you knew what the actual hardness of the water is here? I know you're saying eighty percent of this and a hundred percent.
That's about five hundred milligrams per liter.
Thank you.
And that was in the reports that we provided.
Well, I don't have much time to go through them very thoroughly, which is-
And so if I could go back even to the corrosiveness of the water, I know that is one concern with reverse osmosis water. And part of that is in a municipal system, you do blending. You blend part of the water that's not run through reverse osmosis back in and you adjust the water chemistry so that's not a corrosive issue. And there's a number of communities across the United States of Minnesota that have run those successfully.
But at what cost? Even if you blend it, is it more expensive? Or if you blend it, then it gets more toward the filtration cost of infrastructure and cost of running it?
It really won't affect the infrastructure. The treatment of the water that's proposed, whether it's gravity filtration, well water, or, you know, polished by reverse osmosis, it won't have an impact on the distribution system because the chemistry will be adjusted at the water plant before it goes out.
Yeah, and-
That's not my question, though.
What I think is a key here is that you're blending some of this water and so some of you that were there on Friday, you talked about an eighty-twenty blend.
Right.
So it's eighty percent RO and it's twenty percent and you blend it around so you don't have those issues. Obviously, that's a concern. You know, anything super pure is an issue with that. And so it's a blended water. It's, the system is set up that way so you don't have those issues out in your system.
So that still does eliminate your water softener and it still eliminates your bottled water?
Well, you know, that comes down to personal preference and I think Chris talked about that a little bit. All the analysis we did is we said, if you have a home water softener, you're going to keep that home water softener. You're just not, it's not going to recharge as often. It's not going to need to run as often. And so that's where you'd see the savings. We did not take into account that people are taking all those out. Now, someone may say, hey, the water right out of my tap is fine. I don't need a water softener and you may choose to take that out. But we assume that people, if they had a water softener, they'll continue to still use that water softener, but just not as often because it doesn't need to soften as much. And so some people still like their water even softer than that.
Let me clarify, which I did on Friday as well. When we're talking about we this and the people are doing this and so on and so on is paying for that, we're talking right now at this moment at the eleven hundred that are connected. They're not talking about all the other five thousand people in Minatrista, right?
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
I had a question on the central treatment facility. So I understand the savings in costs and just doing one in operations, but is there a benefit for having all the systems interconnected from a flow perspective?
There is. That was one of our more minor recommendations was to consider what we call decoupling the treatment plants from the water towers. It provides a couple of different pressure sources and provides a better flow distribution if that's possible. So we kind of threw around having a treatment plant located by, I think it was Route Two A, kind of in that central section of Minatrista. And then having pressure sources to the south down by the King's Point water tower and then to the northern system and trying to interconnect that. And that would provide better flow distribution, better pressure distribution.
So how big of a piece of property would you need to do something like that?
I guess that was outside of our scope.
Okay.
It's, yeah. We didn't consider that. I'd let them on, you know, anywhere from two to five acres. It seems like a typical range of water treatment.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Bolton and Meg? I mean, this is a presentation, it's kind of impromptu for some of us who thought it was going to be two weeks from now after we got the study and were able to go through it. But nonetheless, we were grateful that you came and glad to hear it.
I appreciate it because I wasn't able to be there on Friday, unfortunately.
Absolutely. And just to recap, I meant to do at the beginning, our report will be coming out next week. So the full report on the whole value engineering process and we can definitely come back. And after you've had a chance to digest that and go through in further detail, if you ever have any questions along the way, you know, feel free to give us a call.
And I think we should do that. I think we need to do our due diligence and whatever.
Yeah, I have a one question.
We did a very nice presentation on Friday, great on today, but we have lots of things to consider.
I have one question as long as you're here. You talked a little bit about connecting the wells. So I'm assuming you're figuring the piping to get the wells from the southern system to the north and that's all figured in. How does that affect future wells? Is it just, you put a band and you still got to connect them, so you'd want to keep your wells as close as possible to that one treatment plant, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to save raw water, water main cost by doing that. But the idea was to maximize your existing water sources, that you have five wells and rather than drilling new and going, looking for that, we recommended that you utilize those wells and bring them to one spot. Specifically, the Mount Simon wells appeared like those were not going to be used. And we just recommended that that may be reconsidered as there was some value there. And certainly as the city grows, those wells could be used more and more because there's per capita limits on that aquifer. And as the city grows, those limits will go up and those wells could be fully utilized though.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for being here and do you want to say something?
If I could, Madam Mayor, Councilor, just a question in terms of, you know, process and next steps. And we have the summary presented to us this evening. They have indicated that the week of March tenth is when you'll have the full report and that'll provide a lot more detail than what you, I assume, than what we see here this evening. And so once we receive the full report, and then I guess my question for Bolton and Meg is, is that to the extent of your services with the city?
I think typically we would come back and do another presentation for the council after you had a chance to take a look at that full report.
All right, so I guess council, then what you could, maybe we could plan on maybe March seventeenth, we can talk with yourself and Mr. Brown regarding coming back on March seventeenth. That'll give our staff a chance to review their full report. I think we probably have some questions as well with some of this. And I think also WSB may want to probably provide some comment as well, assuming.
Right.
Probably provide some comment on what was being presented as well.
And I think the whole point of this study is to give the council, WSB and everybody some new ideas to consider and to take a look at those. And you guys can take a look at those and say, yep, these are good. We want to proceed with some of these or these are, you know, these are, these are things we already considered and we're throwing them out. So it's really some ideas for everybody to evaluate and see the direction that the city wants to go in.
Very nice. Thank you.
If I could just add a couple of comments as well, and I appreciate the presentation. As part of that process, as you, a number of you, it wasn't an opportunity to have dialogue back and forth. And that's not the intent of that, to debate various items back and forth. And so a lot of the items and a lot of the analysis that has been shared thus far, we have too also done. And so we have some questions with regard to some of the numbers. And so I think, you know, having a report, I think would be fair to look at and, I guess, comment on appropriately. I know there's probably some situations that you're maybe not aware of and nor would you certainly be that we have things that I think would likely impact or change maybe some of the recommendations, maybe not all. But I think it'd be certainly a worthwhile exercise to identify those differences with what you guys have done versus what we have done and some of the constraints that we're aware of that maybe you weren't aware of during some of your analysis. So I think that'd be a good opportunity to discuss those a little bit further as well.
Absolutely. And if March seventeenth is too soon for everyone to get through that, we're flexible with whatever the timing of the city is to go through that, so.
All right, we appreciate that because it's a very, very big deal for us, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, did you want to bring back in the work session study of topics? Okay, next person. That's you, Mr. Funk, I think.
Yeah, the next, yeah, I think, Madam Mayor and Councilor, the carryover item from the work session was to really take a look at the schedule coming up for topics. So, Madam Mayor and Councilor, if you're able to flip back to your special meeting packet on page thirty-one, so it's the last page of your packet. Is everyone there? Just wait just a few seconds here. Let me know when everyone's there.
Oh, let's see here. First I had, I had it. I don't know when I did it.
Everyone there?
Not me, but-
Not yet, okay. Just wait another- Just a few seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. So mainly, Mayor and Councilor, again, this is part of a work session discussion, really taking a look at the activity of topics likely to be discussed in the next couple of months. And so what staff had done is really want to give you an idea of the volume of discussions that were foreseen happening in the next few months and tried to map some of this out through the remainder of the year. Again, just taking a look at the April work session. And most of those items, I thank you, Mr. Grimm, for putting that up on the overhead. The red axes, starting about two-thirds of the way of the page down, really talk about some of the things that are coming up in our work sessions. Water sustainability, commercial development, having a Tristada, community event conversation. We do need to spend a little more time with certain pieces of our strategic plan and further identifying some of the KPIs indicated in that. Staff wants to bring forward a discussion regarding a city home parcel on the Wallace, adjacent to the Wallace property. We also have, need some conversation coming up on the Three Rivers Park District and a city trail agreement. Talking about the north-south trail and how that relates to Woodland Cove, website changes that are coming. So again, there's six or seven topics for April. If you look at then what's happening in May and you scroll up on the page a little bit, something that got brought up at the last council meeting was talk about fuel purchasing, our fleet fuel purchase policy. We do need to get back to our pavement management plan. We do need to also bring you a list of ordinances that we're working on. So we talked about some of the priorities with our ordinance list because there are some things that I think are on the forefront. We actually talked about one earlier in our work session regarding water irrigation. Having a branding discussion, and that's, again, something we're starting here with Councilor Hunt and Mayor Fisher. And then also looking, starting a conversation on reviewing our stormwater project list. So those are, gives you ten or eleven pretty significant topics in the next couple of months. And you can scan for yourself some of the other items listed that we do need to discuss this year. And so when we talked about here recently in our strategic plan session with Mr. Rapp and we did our one-day check-in, we talked about whether there's a need to schedule more work sessions because right now it's, we have one work session per month and that's the first meeting of the month. And looking at the amount of topics to be discussed and what's on our radar screen, I think the question maybe for council, do you foresee wanting to schedule work sessions twice a month prior to every council meeting? Because it seems to me there's a number of topics here and I don't know that we're going to get through all of these even as they're forecasted.
Well, I think we need to go through them and prioritize them if that's what you're going to do or if we're going to have double work sessions, you know, at each council meeting or whatever. That gets a little bit tedious after a while because they're on the same night. It makes it a very, very long night. But I would like to add something to your list here.
I mean, I think that's the purpose of this conversation is for you to see the list, understand what we foresee as discussion topics. And if there are specific items that you want to see discussed sooner than later, please let us know. And then if there's something you think we can adjust a few months further out because it's a lesser priority, we'd like to know that as well. It's going to be difficult, I think. Hopefully, you see that it's going to be difficult for staff to tackle all these in a couple of months and I know all these are very important. And so without scheduling either more work sessions or adjusting the schedule or adjusting the priorities, I think it's going to be difficult to at least get all of these in a work session. Because as you typically know, we have an hour, hour and fifteen minutes in a work session and you get through maybe two or three items.
And some of them deserve a little bit more.
Either because they're important topics.
Okay, well, I guess I would say right away that anything, and is Brian still here? You were behind Mike. I didn't see you. I'm like, maybe you went home?
No.
I think we need to think about what is coming up in the twenty, or fifteen budget. And if there's anything we're thinking of that would be a project of one of these, we should make sure that we get to talk about that prior to the budget time so that we know what they are. And then as a sort of a personal, not a personal favor, but I've been called this several times and you can just think about this. I don't need an answer tonight. But by the Historical Society's museum has called me several times wanting the city to, you know, give them some money to keep it open and they want to move up one floor and this and that and the other thing. But I don't know what to tell them. I've mentioned it to my, but we have so many things going on. But I would like that written down somewhere so that we can either tell them, no, we're absolutely not doing this. Or I've asked that they put their budget together, that they put together what their plans are and that they come and give us a presentation. Because every nonprofit now, it seems, comes to us with, well, let's do it three dollars a person. And I'm like, well, that is not going to fly. We did that at Gillespie. They did, you know, six or three or whatever it was. But you need to, it's supposed to be a contract for service, so please come and tell us what it is that we could do for you that would be a service that we could pay for that would make sense to the council.
Yeah, they need, they need to come to us with a presentation.
Correct, but I'm just checking in with all of you so that-
Yeah, I think definitely.
So that you know that, and you too.
So again, staff's looking for direction. If you want Historical Society on there, it doesn't necessarily need to be done by motion, but certainly a consensus of the council that you want Historical Society on here and where do you want to put it?
Well, I'm not saying I want it on here. I brought it up because you brought up all these topics. I just want to know where people stand with it, whether I can just tell this person, set up an appointment to come before us and then you can decide when in the schedule if there's such a thing. Or that there's absolutely no way that unless they have all their ducks in a row with their presentation, we don't want to see it till they have that. Or do you just want to give them money? I don't know. How'd you get that consensus anywhere else but here, so?
I think we need to know what they're looking for. I mean, I don't know what they're looking for, I mean, so it'd be nice-
What they provide?
Well, that, what they're looking for, kind of funding they're looking for and, you know, like, sort of financial stuff like that. I mean, I think we need to know that before we, we can't just give out money not knowing what's good use for it.
It's hard, though. Nonprofits have a real hard time. I mean, even with WECAN and WECAAB and all these things, I mean, we have to watch what we're doing and make it a contract. And there's certain things that people believe in and certain things that people don't believe in. This person happens to be a longtime person that worked at Tocquey Toys and actually he has a great interest in it, but he lives in Minatrista. So, you know, I could tell him whatever the staff thinks.
Well, it sounds like, Madam Mayor, the council's interested in that information as well. So you could reach out to them or staff could reach out to them and invite them to come to a regular council meeting. These are kind of work session topics.
Right, correct.
I think it would be appropriate for them to come to a regular council meeting. We do have a spot on the agenda for presentations. Oftentimes that's not utilized, but that's the purpose of that on the regular meeting agenda.
Okay.
So it's up for the council to invite the Historical Society to a regular council meeting and give a presentation. I think we've done that before with-
We've done it with WECAN, I know.
WECAN's done it and I think like Jim and Mr. Byers has done it with WRA. And so we've had people come in and give the council presentations to that regard.
And then we can decide whether we want to-
And then after they do a presentation, then the council can decide what the next step would be, whether you invite them back, whether, there's all sorts of options.
Okay. Council, what do you think?
I'm saying invite them.
Yeah, I think, I think we do need to know something about their budget and what they're proposing.
Right.
And letting them know that this decision will not be made the night of their presentation.
Right.
Because they came to me about it, too.
Yeah.
And I know it's a very worthwhile thing and all that, but money only goes so far, so.
And I think our attorney would greatly tell us that it has to be a service for contract, right? We can't just contribute money.
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, uh, in general, that's true. There, the sta, I won't say it's a crazy quilt list, but there is a, there are a number of statutory provisions that do you, do allow you to do things, Historical Society is one, uh, Community Band is one, I mean, there are a number of things that the statutes specifically allow the city to fund, but in general, yes, it has to be a function that the city could perform itself, like recreational facilities, that it chooses to let somebody else do, and then contribute towards that, so, we have to find a statutory authority before we give out money.
Well, where I'm coming from, and I don't know where this will all end up, and I, if you're all okay with it, I will call them and ask them to come and give us a presentation, but I don't think we're up for building a, a museum here, and I think we, anything from Minnetrista needs to be preserved, we don't have that much of our history, so.
Yeah.
So, anyway. All right, I will call, and I'll have them call you, or you can call, I can be the number, you can call them if you want to.
Everybody do it.
Okay, what else? Anybody other have some more suggestions about the?
I quickly went through the list, and so if you'd like, I can run through the entire list, if that's helpful, or, uh, if there's, hopefully, I.
I think we can get through this, I mean, the only bad meetings are May and April, I think we can get through it.
Some of these things might get pushed out a lot, because if you look at, at April, there are a number of items.
Yeah. Or we could start a little earlier.
I don't think it's that bad.
Ms. Erickson, Madam Mayor and Council, Ms. Erickson.
My only comment was, do we want to consider a work session for the March seventeenth? It sounds like there's another presentation, probably with a lot more detailed information than what you've seen here today, and it might be worthwhile to have that as a work session item where we can, you know, discuss a little bit more thoroughly, I, I hope, you know, we have an opportunity to see that again, um, we're not allowed to go back and forth or ask questions, or really anything, so, there's, we have a number of questions, but I think, I think it'd be worthwhile to have that potentially as a work session, to discuss that a little bit more thoroughly, I don't know exactly when the report will be coming, but I think it'd be, uh, worthwhile to have that in a work session.
We can do the seventeenth for a work session, that makes sense.
Can we start at five o'clock, though, because it is pretty hefty stuff, and I don't know if we have anything else on the work session, but if we could start at five, that would be helpful.
What else do we have on the, I don't know.
So, right, right now, we do, uh, we schedule work sessions for the first meeting of the month, so, in the, in the annual calendar that you approved, you approved them for the first Monday of the month.
Correct.
And so, what Mr. Erickson is recommending or suggesting is that, March seventeenth, there is not a special meeting scheduled, and that to schedule a special meeting, you would need to do that by motion and, and approve that here, and I think what staff is recommending is that we dedicate a March seventeenth special meeting for the water topic.
I think we do, I mean, some of us are really a lot about it, and some of us don't, and I think we need to.
Could we have that recorded?
We record all of our special meetings, correct. We audio record all of our special meetings, correct.
Can we just blanket this, and just make a motion to have two work sessions a month?
You could by.
And then covers the seventeenth, it covers, because we're going to need it, looking at.
I think you're going to need it, and, and I think we had mentioned before, one possibility is if you schedule work sessions before every council meeting, we done it years ago, and there's a lot of activity, and it seems like we have a lot more coming again, um, that.
But we didn't use to schedule them before the meeting, though, we used to have one separate night, the, the one Monday night, we didn't have anything.
That's right, that's right.
It was strictly, so we could go three or four hours if we needed to, but this hour, an hour and fifteen minutes isn't too, you know, very long for deep subjects.
That's right.
Anne says she thinks we can get through them as they are, anybody else have a?
Well, I'm open to doing, I, you know, if we schedule them on, then we don't need them, we can always cancel them, right?
Correct.
Yes, let's just do that.
It's easier to do that than staff coming to you every meeting, saying, hey, let's make another motion.
Let's just do that.
Seventeenth.
And so, what basically the motion would be to amend the annual calendar by resolution, and so.
Yeah, then we can just cancel.
We generally do that by resolution, is that correct, Harry, the annual calendar?
We do.
And so procedurally, we need to amend the annual calendar by resolution, so, we could do that by, can we do that by motion, Mr. Brady?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah.
So, is that what you did, didn't you make a resolution to do that?
Well, we didn't quite get there.
We didn't quite get there, I think that's what Mr. Brady.
I, I have this one question about it, I'm, I'm okay with it, too, but, um, how does the public find out that we're not having the meeting, I mean, do we just stick something on the door of the day oven, say we're not, you know, it isn't working out, so?
We need to cancel it at the previous meeting.
Yeah.
But we're, we're two meetings apart, so, we're two weeks apart, so how would we know that?
Because we would decide at the, the last meeting whether we needed to have the work session at the next meeting.
Right, so next meeting, seventeenth, if we say, ah, we don't need one following, you know, then follow.
April, whatever, twenty something.
We can do that here, we can, we're saying we want to need a special meeting on the seventeenth, we could do that.
Do we have to publicize that, don't we?
Well, if we want to be transparent, and if we're, I mean, if we're having a big water treatment meeting, I think we certainly want people to know about it, and if we cancel it.
But if, but if we, if we just keep adding meetings, we just publicize every time, if we just change the calendar, it's a one-shot deal, it's changed.
Right, and then we can just cancel, and then.
Correct, and I think, you know, for residents, one of the reasons that you do an annual calendar the way we do it is so we can put that on our website, and residents know well in advance when we hold meetings, and so I think the difficulty in scheduling special meetings randomly is that not every resident expects to go to the website wondering if the council's scheduling meetings or not, and, and so I think it provides some a little consistency in your messaging, in our messaging to our residents, and so, to me, it seems like there's enough topic items here that we can probably stay pretty busy for a number of months, utilizing both work sessions, and if we get to a point where we think we don't need to meet, we can, as you mentioned, we can, two weeks prior to, cancel that, post, you know, put that information on our website, post it on the front door of City Hall, that way residents know we're not having a meeting that particular evening.
Okay, where is the motion?
They have a question on that, if we do that on the seventeenth, this, the water, the whole water treatment thing is becoming, well, it is very, very important, and extremely controversial, and a tremendous amount of interest in it, should that not be, in addition to be recorded, be, uh, audited?
Well, I think we should take it to the other meeting, too, but I think we need a work session for the council, staff, and whatever, to work on it, we never do that, we never.
Do you ever do a video?
At least I never do, I guess, maybe it's just me.
On a video on a work session?
No.
What I can say, um, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think you, just to highlight again what the statutory statute requires, so your official, your official, um, rec, record of this meeting is through what Terry Harstetter, City Clerk, does, your official minutes, so it's not required to audio or videotape, but it is common practice, as we all know, we all videotape and, and audio record meetings, so it's, it's not legally required. The count, this, for this city, historically, we've always recorded the council meetings, and the primary reason for that is, when we were a member of LMCC, every member city was allowed two recordings per month as part of being a member, so that's why the, the meetings were always focused on council meetings, because those were our two designated meetings. If you wanted to do more than that, we, we had to pay extra, and so, I don't recall us ever exercising that, uh, provision, where we video recorded a meeting and, and paid extra, we just always limited to the two council meetings, so the mayor is correct in that we haven't historically recorded work sessions. Now that we're no longer a member of, of LMCC, we do have, uh, a current contract with, uh, with our recorder, who's here this evening, and in that contract, the, the, the contract would not allow for, does not allow for, it'll, excuse me, the contract allows for those two meetings a month, and so if we were to record another meeting, then we would need to negotiate with, uh, our technician about what that would involve. So you can do it, it just, then we would need to revisit the contract.
I would suggest that it's, since it is such an important topic, that we do have it videotaped, and go at the extra expense.
How much is the extra expense, that's what I'd like to know.
We'll have to ask him.
I think you would want, instead of making it the.
On the spot.
On the spot negotiation, I think what maybe you want to do is, is direct staff to.
He's okay with it.
Well, he's working two more hours, he'd be working, starting at five instead of seven.
Yeah, so that probably, well, a session would be two hours, that probably results in around a hundred and eighty dollars.
Yep.
So he'd start at five instead of seven.
Because we kind of need to know that tonight, because we have to approve that tonight, so that it will be the seventeenth meeting.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Are you available at five?
Yes.
Done.
He's not. Um, whatever, I don't care what you do.
I make a motion that we go ahead with it.
I only have one caveat to that, it's not a budgetary expense, and we're starting to spend a lot of money, uh, out of our reserve, so just want to caution everyone, I'm not saying this is one of the legitimate ones, but, I mean, we do have to consider that way, and then we're going into budget season, and you don't want to raise taxes, so.
But that is a minor expense we're talking about right now. We're not talking about hundreds and thousands of dollars.
Go ahead, make your motion, you are.
I did make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved in second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
You, you don't have anything else to say, I'm assuming, all those in favor signify, say aye?
Aye.
And I'm going to say aye also, because I do think it's a part of the meeting, but I will not say aye to every single one, every time we want to spend some money.
I certainly don't have to.
Oh, no, I agree, I just think this meeting is, I agree with her, and I think it's an important meeting.
So, um, Madam Mayor and Council, this is a point of clarification, is, the motion is for this meeting only, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this meeting only, uh, if, if so directed, we could, uh, request Mr. Bruni, who handles all of our contracts, to work with our technician, and at least give us a proposal for, in the future, if there's other important topics to be discussed, we'll have a price, we'll know exactly what the pricing would be ahead of, ahead of time. So if it's okay with council, we will, maybe ask Mr. Bruni to at least, again, visit with our technician, have him provide us, uh, what that cost would be, like a special meeting price, okay, so that way he's not on the spot again.
So, did you need a motion for that, or not?
I don't think so, we'll just.
You got the, okay. All right, um, whenever we know.
So. They haven't, they haven't had a whole special meeting.
Do you make that motion?
So, the, the only other action, I guess, uh, Mr. Van Lee brought up, the, maybe, a motion to amend the current city calendar by resolution, to add special council meetings to the second Monday of every month, for the remainder of 2014.
So, we'll start at that.
Well, but in second, then you add a second.
Starting, oh, starting at, we, we generally start at five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Except for the seventeenth.
Except for the seventeenth.
Except for the seventeenth.
So that we don't always.
Right, March seventeenth will be five o'clock, the rest of the meetings will be five-thirty.
Correct.
Can I get a clarification on that, say that again, I, I think I missed something here.
We're going to add, because right now, we are having what is the first council meeting of the month, we have a work session.
That's, we're going to change it to the second.
We're going to change it to both.
Oh, you're going to have both?
Two work sessions.
Two work sessions, okay.
And, but what time is, what is he asking, you already did that?
Generally, five-thirty, except for the seventeenth, which is five.
Yeah.
So is that clear, just standing, do you need a motion?
I think it's clear.
Okay, good.
So you have a motion, and you'll need to, I think, get a second, Madam Mayor, or is that not second?
I seconded it.
I think she did, yeah, okay, it's been moved in seconded, then to add that, uh, all those in favor signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
So you will line these up for us, right?
So, and you, yeah, so you have an idea of the upcoming work session topics of.
And we could change them, too.
Absolutely, this is just a guide, this gives you an idea of what, at least we foresee in the next few months, in the remainder part of the year, so if there's something that you want to see added or, or shifted around, um, we'll include this in your packet, actually, we'll make this, we'll put this in your packet, and if you look at your agenda items, I think that they're administrative items, we do have, I think, discussed the next leading topic, so we'll always have that there for you, so you can get a flavor again for what's coming up.
Can I get an explanation on just, just one?
Sure.
And it's public works and boneyard, what does that one mean?
So, um, the boneyards, we refer to the.
In the back.
The backyard, the boneyard, um, the city provided notice to, City of Minnetrista provided notice to the City of Mound that we were, um, terminating the existing agreement, that was a two-year notification.
Okay.
And so we notified them a little over a year ago, and their, uh, con, the contract with them, it terminates December thirty-first of 2014, and so, just anticipating that we may want to talk about the boneyard, and at some point, probably revisiting those discussions with the city.
I, I figured that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure that, that, that that's what it was, because that was one question I had written down in my notes, is sometimes, talk, find out what's happening with that situation, if we've done anything with it, but, got it covered, nice job.
So, yeah, so if there's anything on the list that you want to add, or, again, take off or prioritize, this is, we'll, we'll keep this routinely in front of you.
So in March, are we still going to review the work session schedule, or is this the schedule?
These are kind of the, the items there were.
Same items. Same byway, water system, so March is done, March is done.
All right, uh, I think we got the claims.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I asked Brett Weiss to come here today, would it be appropriate, would he just be able to stop up and make a brief comment or two?
Sure.
Thank you.
Say anything?
That's okay, I, I didn't mind staying, uh, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak for a minute, obviously, um, good meeting for me to come to, I heard some information that, uh, maybe wasn't necessarily positive about our organization, and we will check into that, uh, Mr. Van Lee, it's certainly, and I, I heard you, Mr. Christians, that, are you concerned that this happens with everything, and I, I would tell you that that is not the case, and if you check our fee schedule, and if you check our reputation, that is not the case, I don't know what happened on that, we will, we will double-check, and certainly apologize to staff that we put them in that position, I, I will tell you that our individual that does that is, does a very thorough job, and maybe does too thorough of a job compared to some of our competitors. Uh, the one, one thing I wanted to do is, I, I know that, and I, I think Mr. Christians said it, uh, that this has become a very controversial topic on the, on the water system, and I certainly feel it when I sit in the, the room here, and I, I feel it when a lot of this is being discussed, and I guess what I would ask for is that, um, that we give it a little bit of time until the seventeenth to talk about what recommendations are there, and what we did or didn't do, I can tell you that everything that WSB did was in your best behalf, uh, we provided a recommendation for what we felt was the lowest cost option to provide, uh, uh, what was necessary to meet the primary and secondary standards, and while we may have a different opinion on how that happens compared to what Bolton Menkes has provided here tonight, it doesn't make one right and one wrong, um, if the council chooses to go with something that is more robust, or would like to look at things like a central plant that would involve, we think a very difficult crossing of Dutch Lake with a directional bore underneath the lake, which is challenging, or buying property to get around there, those are things that we have evaluated, and I think that Mark is right, that, uh, you know, we need to talk about those things and make sure that the assumptions that they made on there are accurate, so that we get the, the most appropriate, uh, information out. I guess the thing that I would ask for is that, we've been your engineer for some time now, we stepped up and took on the public works role when you had a need, and that is not a money-making operation for us, with the amount of time that we spend and the costs that we charge for you, but we did that, uh, on behalf of the City of Minnetrista, and so what I would ask is that you give us just a little bit of consideration, that we didn't all of a sudden change our stripes and become an organization that is not working on your behalf, or that is colluding to do something that is not in your best interest, because that is not what is going on, and I know there's a lot of, uh, you know, I guess vitriol about what is going on here and, and what we're doing, but there is nothing, we are working, and I think all you have to do is look at Mark Erickson's face to realize that, um, what we want to be is your city engineer, we want to do those things for you, um, if[1698.44] If there is any question about what we are doing or the recommendations that we are providing, we're happy to discuss those, and certainly, I think the seventeenth is a good time for us to do that. But there is no, there is no ulterior motive in our organization other than to represent you in the most positive way possible. So I, I guess that's all I'd ask. I would certainly be available for any questions that you might have, but I can assure, and I guess one other thing that I wanted to address, been a lot of discussion about five years, two and a half years, how long was the recommendation for, for the, the, the water plant? The system that we had identified was to put various water plants out throughout the community, and those would be put out as they were necessary to be provided. The five years is a, is a really optimistic, based on the number of housing starts that are going to happen, and also what happens with the sprinkling, the amount of sprinkling that occurs. With the changes, we think that that five years could go to ten years possibly. We don't know where, where that's at. We don't know how much of an impact your change in rate structure will have on that. But because we are building multiple plants, and because that is what was deemed to be the best way to go, it does appear that, that you don't have as much capacity. So I, you know, I think that there are different ways to look at this. There certainly wasn't any, there wasn't anything that was left out that, you know, in our report, it talked about multiple plants, it talked about how we were going to tie things together, and, and that was the intent about how we were going to go, go forward with that. So there wasn't, there wasn't anything that, any reason that we left something out. We, we made a recommendation in the, in the best way possible. I think that you have, close to sixty percent of your water is going to sprinkler, right now. And so if that changes with the rate structure, obviously, then you have a longer length of time before you have to add on to that. But those, that information was certainly happy to provide, but I just wanted to address that a little bit, make sure that, that you knew, if there were questions, we will certainly address those, and once we get the study, we'll provide some information in a very positive fashion about what we did, how we went about it, and, and what the recommendations were. And then you can choose to, to do whatever you want to do, and we will respect that decision going forward in whatever, whatever manner you choose to do that. So, thank you for giving me a few minutes to do that. I, I just hope that, that you can appreciate where we're coming from, and we are, we are working hard on your behalf, and we'll continue to do that, as long as you allow us to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. All right, um, now we must, I've been at the claims about five times, so. All right, item number seven, which is the administrative items, we have the claims. Questions? Comments?
Make them, or accept the claims as written?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as they were written. Any other comments? Harry, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, the same sign. Next is council reports. Let's see, where, pardon. Um, was that the planning commission, where we had the variance for the Crane Island,